Courts flying around over here.
Good afternoon, this is a continuation of the Veterans in Politics International Endorsement Interviews. We now have the County Commissioner District C Candidate Interviews. We have Commissioner Larry Brown, we have candidate Gary Hosea, and we have Craig O'Leary. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Let me run through some of the rules. First, I'm the moderator, Richard Scotty, and we're going to give each candidate a one-minute introduction. Then, the panel members will each have an opportunity to ask you questions. You'll have one minute to respond, and if there's a follow-up question, you'll have 30 seconds to respond to that. The timekeeper is going to be Melanie Howard. She's coming in to sit down right now. She's the official timekeeper. She'll either sound some beep on her phone or raise her hand when you have 10 seconds remaining, and then she'll call time right about when time expires. Are there any questions? Very good. Why don't we begin then, and we can begin closest to me with Commissioner Larry Brown. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for having this forum. My name is Larry Brown, born and raised in the Boston area.
Is your microphone on?
Go ahead and hold it up like this.
Nothing's on.
I don't think it's on either.
There you go.
There we go. Now it's on. There we go.
Am I down to 45 seconds, Melanie?
There you go.
Abbreviated.
Is it working? Okay. You can start now.
Larry Brown, born and raised in the Boston area. Do this.
Thank you, Craig.
Testing.
There you go.
My name is Larry Brown, born and raised in the Boston area. Went to Harvard University, graduated with a degree in government, and shortly thereafter signed a professional baseball contract which brought me to Las Vegas in 1983. Played in 1983 and 84 with the Las Vegas Stars. My wife and I decided to stay in Las Vegas one winter after baseball, and that's turned into 30 years. I have three born and raised Las Vegans. One is my son who reported this morning to Fort Bragg after graduating last week from jump school and a month ago from basic training in Fort Benning, Georgia. My dad was Navy. The Navy put him through med school. My father-in-law was Army. I have been on the commission for four years and put a priority right now because of the last few years on the ability to budget in short. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
That's an unidentified flying object.
It's been identified as a moth.
Mr. Hosea.
I'm Gary Hosea. I'm running for Commissioner Brown's seat, District C. I graduated from the University of Maryland, College Park. I have a master's degree from Webster University and masters in theology with Southern Methodist degrees. I too was born in Kittyry, Maine, not far from where Commissioner Brown's from. I've lived all over the world. My dad was in the Navy. I have relatives in the Air Force Army. I was in the Army for 20 years. I'm a veteran. I served overseas in many assignments. In fact, during 83, I was in Germany on the border when we still had a real world border mission. I believe I'm best qualified candidate and will tackle the job of getting our county budget trimmed. Thank you.
How does it say?
I don't know that it was a good thing. My name is Craig Lake. I was born and raised here in Las Vegas. I'm a small business owner. I started my business, my current business, when I was 19-years-old. It's a lighting sales agency. We represent manufacturers from all over the country. And got involved in politics in 2010 because of what had happened here in the Las Vegas economy. And I think it's imperative that we get our economy back on track. We increase our tax base, not increase our taxes, and get Las Vegans back to work. So, as I was running for Congress, I quickly realized how important and pressing the local issues were. And as, you know, some things happened with redistricting and what's happened over the last four years and, you know, all the different races candidates have run for, it became an opportunity, I think, for me to step into County Commission in Seat C and try to help. I don't really believe we have a business owner on the County Commission, and I intend to be there and impart my fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let's begin with the questions from the panel members. Why don't we begin with Mr. Weber, and we'll just continue on down the line this way.
Do you want to start on this side and then go back and forth?
We'll go back. We'll, uh...
Then he'll start.
I'll leave it up to the panel members to...
Both mics are working now, so...
Okay, yeah, I just didn't want to get the interference.
All right.
Thanks. And each panel member can tell us who they want to direct the question to in which order.
And for Mr. Brown.
Can you hear me? Okay, in regards to, you've been there four years, and I think I've seen you on TV before, on different things. Now, sometimes you see certain members on TV a lot, and that gives the impression that they're doing a lot. Please tell me that that's not so. Could you repeat that? There are certain council members that I sometimes see all the time on TV. It's like Sisalak, he's on TV all the time about everything. Why is it seem like he's stealing the show?
I think, it's a good question. I can't be best left to answer that, but directly to your question, not only the past three and a half years on the commission, but also prior 11 and a half on the city council, I have a completely different style. I'm not one that believes your name in the paper for good or bad is what you want to do. I prefer to be out of the paper and truly let my actions and accomplishments speak for themselves. I am considered the low-key member at the city. Of course, with Oscar Goodman, you couldn't be anything but low-key. And to a certain extent, on the commission, there's a couple commissioners that have chosen to go out there. I prefer to do my work behind the scenes and let, again, the actions and accomplishments speak for themselves.
Okay, thank you. And Gary, obviously, in regards to that question, how would you be on the County Commission?
I would be sort of moderate in the fact that Mr. Commissioner Brown is low-key. Up until recently, he didn't even have a newsletter out until the spring edition. He wasn't even communicating with constituents other than by email blast. So, he's been ineffective as a county commissioner, and he failed recently in the bid for the Maryland race. And that's part of why that I am running for County Commission.
Okay, and Mr. Lake, same question. How would you be on that board, very vocal or quiet?
I think anybody who knows me knows that I'm a pretty vocal guy and able to get attention, and that's, I think, imperative. And I don't think that the County Commission office is overly partisan, but there are seven out of seven commissioners as Democrats. And like I said, I think their backgrounds are certainly different from mine in business. And I think you can clash for the sake of clashing, and I don't think that does anyone any good. But I think having a strong opposite opinion where you can work together and find that middle ground that's best for everyone is probably what the people of the district would like to see, and there's no question that I would be a very vocal member.
And thank you, gentlemen, very much.
I guess we'll start in the opposite order, but kind of dovetails off of part of Commissioner Brown's answer about accomplishments. So, for Commissioner Brown, the question will be, what were your accomplishments that you want to point to? For the other two candidates, what do you see as the first things that you really want to accomplish if you get this, if you actually win this election?
Well, I think it's imperative that we streamline commission operations and make it easier for businesses to apply for licenses, get licenses, know going in what they're going to get, you know, approved via inspections. And I know there are some processes where you can turn in plans and some things like that, but for really starting out business owners, which I'm overly familiar with, you know, it's very helpful to have a streamlined process. I think that's important, you know, going out and recruiting other businesses, both keeping businesses here and recruiting businesses out of state. I think I bring a fresh perspective and a young mind that other small business owners and people starting out can relate to. So, to me, that's a priority. And the other priority is to go through this budget and find money and use that to help constituents where it makes sense and use that to make cuts where it makes sense so possibly we can have a better tax environment for the people who live here in Clark County.
Gary Hosea, I concur with Mr. Lake. What I would also like to see happen is our reduced overfunding of UMC, either by making it a hospital, maybe a 7VA hospital, and get it government-funded so that we also have local funding for our hospital that cut $80 million every year that we're spending on county government. The other thing I would do would be a complete audit of Clark County budget. Recently, Commissioner Brown, in a meeting on March 15th, stated they found $50 million of finance money for the fire department, and there may be more. Well, maybe more just talking about it. Doing a complete audit to include personnel, from a personnel standpoint, and what their jobs do and what they entail would be lessening the burden on the government. Also, I brought out recently the same thing Mr. Lake did about small business owners and stuff. As a small business, prior small business owner, I have that experience as well. Thank you.
At the city, I'd focus on three accomplishments of significance. First and foremost is the fiscal responsibility. Just go back and check the records. I was given credit, a lot of the credit towards creating this budget hearing process that used to be a couple hours and now has turned into full days of public hearings and certainly months leading up to that. Secondly, the parks and playgrounds and trail systems and open space in the northwest, second to none in southern Nevada, and that is factual. And third, and something I carried over to the county, is the accessibility, trying to break down the barriers of government to allow citizens as individuals or businesses to come in and break through the bureaucracy and get face time with not only the commission but also the senior management. Just in the last three years where budget has been the critical component of the county, we've reduced county operations by 22 percent. And there's a lot more detail that goes into that, but those are the things that I would point to at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Brown, could you please define the perimeters of your county, of your District C, please?
On the south side, I have been moved back northerly to Charleston and Alta. It goes Charleston down to Rampart, jumps over to Alta, and Alta all the way down to Decatur. On the east side, it goes to Decatur, to Rancho, then it literally follows the 95 up into the northwest. Also included in that is Indian Springs, Cold Creek, and Mount Charleston.
What do you see as the biggest problems in your district right now?
Housing. Housing has been probably at the forefront of the challenges going on out there. In the northwest, we've been very fortunate because of the growth being relatively new. We have seen the newer parks, the newer roads, the flood control, the schools. So, a lot of that public infrastructure has not been a problem where it is in other areas. But housing number one, and the ability of government to assist in creating jobs through public work projects or certainly through the private sector.
Would you support, in foreclosures, in high foreclosure neighborhoods, would you support minimum bids on auctioned houses to protect the homeowners that are already in place?
Well, certainly, and I don't know enough about what you're specifically asking, but we've got to be careful, whatever remedy we put out there as a governmental agency, that it doesn't adversely harm those who have stuck with it, made their payments while others around them have...
That's a fair point. That's exactly what my point was. Very good, thank you. Mr. Hosea, what do you think are the biggest problems in District C?
Biggest problems are creating jobs and the housing. We need government to get out of the way and narrow government a little bit so that we can create jobs and buy locally.
Well, that's almost, that's almost a contradiction because you're saying that the government shouldn't be involved in creating jobs, but you say the government should create jobs. Let me ask you this question. If a person came to you with a good business plan that would create 1,000 or 2,000 jobs here in Las Vegas and would enhance the economy, would you support a county grant for that proposition?
I would look at, depending after we did the audit, county audit, saw how much money we are before we have to raise taxes, I would possibly support it.
So, what I would really like to know is, would you support that policy? Not on an individual basis, but overall, do you think that the county should be involved in providing money to entrepreneurs to develop businesses that will create, that will create economic growth for the county?
Mr. Hosea, why don't you take 15 seconds for that, and then we've got to keep it moving.
The county should do that. They used to do that.
So, you would be in favor of grants? Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Lake, what do you think is the biggest issue in...
No question, it's people being able to make a living and find work and have a job. And I think even with the housing crisis, if people have work and they can make their payments, it certainly doesn't eliminate the problem, but it makes it much easier to deal with. And then, just before you jump in, the other thing that I would say is a problem is some of the stuff, with all due respect, that Mr. Brown talked about. We have, you know, with some of these parks and operations, so many things that are actually causing a liability for us. And the city council just recently said, I think we're about $12 million behind on funding our baseball parks, which I know, you're not Tom Selleck, but you know you were known as Mr. Baseball and helping with the community unfortunately, and it's a great thing to do. But now we have $12 million just on a year-in, year-out basis that we can't meet. So, I would say that there's problems with unfunded projects going forward.
I see. So, your biggest issue in District C is the fact we don't have enough baseball fields?
No, I said my biggest issue is jobs. That was the very first thing I said. My second issue is things that we cannot fund in the county. If we don't have the ability to fund them, it limits what the county can do to help citizens and services that they really need.
Thank you. Let's move the questioning to Mr. Lowery. Thank you.
I have a two-part question. First is regarding veterans' courts and the county's role in helping administer and plan the administration of those veterans' courts. Do you support the veterans' courts? Would you expand the veterans' courts? And you wanted to know about them. Number two question is, what's with the metal donkeys inside the road and the horses? And what's that costing us?
Where do you want to start, on this side or that side?
Mr. Brown.
Start with the...
Start with the second one. I think you're referring to the 15 and the 95 projects. State statute was passed a few years ago that all public work projects and roadways, major highways includes, and I'm not sure of the exact percentage, but I'm going to say somewhere between 1.5 to 3 percent, public art. So, instead of landscaping with turf or trees that would be long-term maintenance, they've created this static portion of the art. So, that's part of state statute. You're going to see, especially on the major freeways, that's mandatory on those construction projects. As far as the veterans' court, that's interesting because similar, we went, we're going through this process of analysis on the night court. And the County Commission funds the court system, but we do not administer the court system. My role as a commissioner would absolutely support a veterans' court, with some work being done at the JP level. But the challenge would be, what kind of cost would that be? Would it knock out another court? Would it disrupt or adversely impact the existing thing? And that's best left up to the court administrator and the chief judges on both District and JPs.
Thank you.
Yes, I support veterans' courts and I support expanding them, but then again, it would depend on the cost and how we would, and where they would be. Recently, they put air quality down on Russell and Cameron above the building department. They separated a lot of departments. My idea would have been to move departments together and use that building as the court billing is already overpressed for civil-type issues.
On the veterans' court, I do support it, and I think it is, and one of the purposes is to really solve the symptoms rather than just putting people in a normal court. There may be symptoms that we can solve earlier in the community, including some things that led to, unfortunately, some very difficult things that have happened in the community over the last six months. So, I do support them. From what I've seen, you know, the way they're operating now is with judges working extra hours or just picking it up almost on a volunteer basis. And to me, that makes a lot of sense because it helps with funding, but also gives them the ability to have a different type of court system.
What about the donkeys?
To me, it becomes insane at a point, but I'd have to look at where the levels of funding is coming in. If it's coming in federally and they're, you know, required to spend it on the roads, then it's like a mule with a spinning wheel. They don't know what to do with it. So, I certainly support having beautification projects, but they have to be done in a fiscally responsible manner. And if there's a way to return the money, even in some cases, I would look at doing that.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and thank you for joining us today. I'm going to repeat a question I asked the last members, and it's that our elected officials increasingly ignore the will of we the people and our laws and our constitution. Our state has gone from one of the most prosperous states in the country to absolute, just about worse on every list you can imagine. So, Mr. Brown, this question is for you. Why would we want to reelect anybody? We have a, depending on what study you pay attention to, an 80 to 90 percent reelection rate for most of our incumbents. So, why would we want to reelect you when it seems that you've already proven to us that you're not doing anything for our state or our county?
Well, Karen, I would take issue with the first part of the comment as far as elected officials going against the constitution or whatever language you used. I would, I would challenge you on that. If there's one thing that I brought to the office is honesty and integrity, and especially when it comes to my role by statute and the oath I took. So, that aside. As far as the incumbency and, you know, we've always been at the bottom of a lot of lists, even during the good times. But when that bubble burst and there's a new reality here, it's a challenge. I give more credit, directly answering your question, I give more credit to the voters in southern Nevada. I think during a general election, you have a very, very strong turnout during the presidential year especially. I give them the credit to make a decision whether that person in office has done their job or whether candidates that are challenging for that position are better. So, I would, I would refer to just the competence of the voting public.
That question was just for Mr. Brown, and I pass on the rest of them.
Can we have a chance to respond to the context of that?
Sure. If you have a comment, absolutely.
You want us to...
You get 30 seconds.
One way I would respond is HOAs have to be elected. Why can't town boards be elected? Mr. Brown has stated on Mount Charleston, they was against, and our county commissioners are against electing town board members, but yet HOAs are elected.
To me, we have a representative form of government, and if I'm elected, my job is to represent the people in my district and also to represent greater Clark County as a whole. And to that end, I would say that the makeup of the current Clark County Board is very similar in educational background or occupational background, and I think that's why it's vital to have someone like me who is a young entrepreneur with an eye on the future and a vested stake and interest in the future. And the only other thing I would point out is, you know, Mr. Brown has had 16 years in office, and being on the bottom of the list early in that time or late in that time, you know, I think it's time to move on and find somebody else to do the job.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. My question is about Metro killing people. It seems like every six or eight or 10 months, Metro shoots someone, and, you know, six or eight months after that, they come before the County Commission asking you to bless a, you know, a couple of hundreds of thousands of dollars or a couple of million-dollar settlement. It, you know, it reminds me of a spoiled rich kid whose rich dad keeps bailing him out. And there doesn't seem to be any movement on the part of the County Commission other than just to continue to shake their head and approve the settlement. These are tough economic times, you know, everyone's having to tighten their belts, and it's frustrating to me that the County Commission seems to be largely ignoring this huge drain on public funds. I see Mr. Lake feverishly scribbling some notes, so I think he has a good answer. So, let's begin with you.
Well, I think, you know, the first thing to point out and what's most important is that we do have a lot of good cops in our community, and it's, you know, much like our veterans, there's great ones, and then there's some sometimes that have challenges. And our job is to find those people that have challenges and find the appropriate action for them. So, what I would say, though, where we do have a challenge is we have a challenge of trust in our community. And so, it's important that I think we look into what's going on and at least just reinforce and reinstall the trust in our community. And that's going to require us taking a hard look at Metro and being in the Clark County Commission and funding Metro. As you mentioned, in some of these situations, it gives us the opportunity to take a look at that, specifically to the most recent shooting. I believe there's a coroner's inquest meeting coming up first part of next month, and, you know, when and if that happens, you know, more specifically on that situation, we can comment more. The other thing is, there may come a point in time where we may need to take a look at, you know, bringing someone like the Department of Justice in to take a look at what's going on. I'm not comfortable with our current Department of Justice, but if we get a less partisan national Department of Justice, it may be something we need to look at. But I do want to reinforce that we do have a lot of good cops, but we need to reinstall trust in our community.
So, you think there may come a time where we need to look at Metro's use-of-force policy?
No, we need to look at that now, bar none. But I'm saying how aggressively we do that is the question, and I think certainly this coroner's inquest meeting is going to reveal a lot of things. And then, after that, you know, what I am saying, though, is who does it, when, where, and why? But it needs to be aggressive, and certainly in regards to the use of force.
I concur with Mr. Lake on some points. We do have a lot of good officers out there, but we need to educate them better as far as the use of force and deadly force goes. Also, as far as money goes, you're correct. The county doesn't know when to say no. They just gave $200,000 to the airport, and contractors have to come up with about $400,000, and it'll actually come out of taxpayers' pockets for the new airport that's opening up, new wing of the airport. So, it's actually, the $400,000 is actually going to come out of taxpayers' money, and then commissioners are going to get their kickbacks for, under the table or whatever, for campaign contributions. County government is totally out of control when it comes to budget. Yes, I agree.
Two issues. One is the role of the city and the county, and we sit on fiscal affairs with a private sector member. And that, again, by statute, is the funding of Metro. When you get into operational, that is an elected sheriff, and it's his responsibility. Specific to the comment made, we have a great police department. Look at the crime statistics over the last five to 10 years. Everything, in almost every category, has gone down. So, I agree. We need to acknowledge and recognize the good cops. As far as the bad cops, the rogue cops, the cops that are making these bad decisions, you go after them with every tool possible. And currently, that wasn't mentioned, we are being investigated. We know Metro is being investigated by the Department of Justice. They're going through, they're in town, they're studying that now. And then likewise, as far as their use of force and those things, they need to be reviewed from an outside agency outside of Las Vegas. The county's rule, I think when we went through the coroner's inquest, the county did have the ability to create a process that we thought would work better than the previous one. Now, that is stagnant right now because of litigation and threats. But ultimately, that will get back on track, and we'll have that outside review of those shootings.
Mr. Brown, was, Mr. Brown, was the shooting of Stanley Gibbs, was that justified? Mr. Brown, was, um, Mr. Brown, was, was the shooting of Stanley Gibbs, um, was that justified, or was that unlawful?
Uh, this is the most recent one in the party law.
Was it the veteran who was injured?
No, from a personal perspective, not knowing anything, it, it's outrageous. It's absolutely outrageous that that action would be taken, and the innuendos that are out there, that there was miscommunication. But the bottom line, a man lost his life in a situation that he didn't have to. It, it, it's appalling that that would happen, but it did. What do we do about it, we go back to that original question, we have to have stronger policies in place.
Thank all of you for coming to this endorsement panel, we appreciate it. I've actually got one question for each of you. Mr. Brown, I know our, our firm has represented, uh... We've, we've done some work for uh, agencies, not the county. However, one of the things I have noticed is the different branches of the agencies, the different departments can do whatever they want, and I'm gonna use an example, it's photocopying. We do litigation, and it's usually very large litigation, and therefore, like we send out sometimes twenty thousand copies and things like that. Now, we negotiate with our vendors for a set rate. They use whoever they want, and I am finding that a lot of times, the prices that they're paying is double than what we could do for the taxpayers. Um, so my question to you is, would you support contracts and, and force the debt departments in the county to start utilizing those when the budget, when the money is above something? Mr. Hosea, you mentioned that you would like to uh, reduce the overfunding of UMC. However, with our jobless rate, a lot of people are no longer insured, and that is the only place that they can go for medical attention. And Mr. Lake, um, how would you bring business to it? So I will start with Mr. Hosea, Mr. Brown, and then Mr. Lake.
The way we can reduce funding at UMC is by looking at the cost and cutting costs. Recently, uh, former Admiral Branham started with the pharmacy to reduce costs and cut unit dose. Another thing is, we cannot longer afford all these illegal aliens to come in wanting emergency service. Once we give them emergency service, we need to give them a plane ticket to someplace so that they don't keep on coming back. Yes, I believe we can cut costs at UMC, it should have been a VA hospital. Uh, our current VA hospital still isn't built. We could have used Senator Harry Reid's power and had it merge with the VA hospital, something like has happened in San Diego. That way, we have federal dollars, state dollars, and county dollars, which would have reduced our costs overall.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Your, your question speaks to a, a bigger issue here, as far as procurement and contract, now is the time. A few years back, when we had double-digit revenue growth, and everybody was working, and everybody had jobs, and the county was in, in a good financial position, there weren't those complaints. Now, it's a new reality. I mentioned earlier that the county's reduced its operational by twenty-two percent, not the procurement. It's the contracts, the procurement process, that has the opportunity to not only save money now in the crisis we're in, but more importantly, change the way we do business. And that fundamentally is an opportunity we have now that we haven't had in a long time, to change the way the county interacts with the business community.
And you would support that?
Absolutely, I'd support that, absolutely.
Mr. Brown?
And Mr. Lake?
I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Uh, just really quick, because I think it's relative to creating business, um, you know, when we talk about now is the time, um, I think four years ago is the time when we had projects getting shut down on the strip, and we clearly knew that our revenues were dropping, when there was still money left, that's when the decisions needed to be made. Now you're trying to solve a problem four years later when, you know, the budget, and as he said, has been reduced, um, you know, by significant amounts, I would argue with that. Uh, the second point I would say is, we need to have open contracts with everyone, you know, all these government projects. And, and I have seen some single-name government projects go out to bid, and things like that are unacceptable. Every project should be subject to two or three bids minimum, um, and, and that would be something I would focus on. And that's part of creating business here in the valley, because if there's two or three or four people have an opportunity to bid on something, it increases opportunities for business here. Um, secondarily speaking, you know, there's a philosophical difference with a lot of people on how to create jobs, and I want to be very clearly, you know, I think I can lead and I can help, and there's a lot of things that the county can do, but it can't specifically create jobs, you have to foster a better environment so that small business owners and hard-working Americans can create jobs.
Thank you. Alright, I think we're out of time.
We're over. Well, we are out of time, um, very good. Well, then gentlemen, thank you very much for attending the Veterans in Politics interview.